Do I hear a motion for the board to increase the budget for the new transportation facility by $6.5 million from $3 million to $9.5 million for construction of the new facility?
Madam Chair, I move that the board increase the budget for the new transportation facility by $6.5 million from $3 million to $9.5 million for construction of the new facility.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Oswald. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Salters to discuss, lead the discussion on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll just briefly run through some components of the presentation that I talked through last month and, or, excuse me, last meeting and kind of tag teamed with Mr. Kurtz. And do have a couple of current renderings that I'll address here in just a few minutes. As you recall, the Barrow Road facility is located here. It's actually own a portion of land that is leased from State Department of Education, so we don't actually own that land. Closer shot of that, the adjacent facility there is the bus shop that is run by the State Department of Education. And then this area here is our primary operation point for the Lexington facility. As you recall, we're combining this operation with our White Knoll area facility. River Bluff and Lexington currently run out of this, this area. Few shots of the current state of the buildings that they're operating out of. We looked at these last time. I'll just kind of remind you of what we're working in currently at our bus facility. You know, portable classrooms. If I'm not mistaken, some of these date back to the 1970s. And have been there a very, very long time. And you can see we have very close quarters and a lot of people piled into limited space there. Another major issue that we have on this lot is flooding. And these are, these shots were taken recently. It's flooding in our parking lots where our buses park. It's flooding where our drivers go to try to park their vehicles. It's flooding where we have our, you know, movements back and forth on sidewalks. Obviously, these are unsafe conditions when it rains for our staff to move about. So there's no, no question that the district is in long in need of a new facility. We purchased the land centrally to be able to serve the three major high school areas. And you can see the proximity of the land to those high schools. Again, this is just a recap of the land here at this location off Two-Night Road at I-20. And a closer shot of that. And then this is a rendering generally of what that site would look like. So we would develop the upper portion of the site, which would be in this area here, leaving this lower portion currently undeveloped. And so, you know, a number of things that I'll tell you, these, all of these renderings that we've, we've looked at were, were early renderings and concepts and ideas that were presented by our architects and construction team. And as we've gone through the process, we've developed and modified different things related to budget and related to, you know, value engineering to try to, try to bring about not only efficiencies of cost, but efficiencies of use of the building. You know, this area here is, is a highlight. And this is a, an area that, you know, in the last meeting, we showed you what the, the overall kind of wish list, long-term growth concept would be with, with multiple bays, multiple washdown areas. And in this case, we have two bays and two washdown areas, which, which looks like this. And, and this is, is what we're working towards. I, I like the fact that everyone thinks you can put a hard number on something in today's construction market. I, I don't know if, if folks follow anything related to construction. I know we have a lot of folks in our community that do. The, I was talking with Dr. Little earlier today. Lumber futures are, you know, over 200% of what they were last year this time. Steel, excuse me, 300% steel futures are 200%. And so the, the market is, is basically very, very volatile right now. And so we're showing you these concepts. We've, we've met and value engineered with our construction, CM at Risk Management firm that's on this project. And we will do that again, once the budget, if, you know, whichever budget we go with, we'll do that again and have a conversation with them about what we can buy in today's market. And it's different than yesterday and it'll be different than tomorrow because of the way the market is changing. There are delays in delivery of items. And, you know, those things are changing on a regular basis. So we will continue to, to have those conversations as we go forward. You know, this building as it, as it is designed meets the needs of our, our transportation staff, you know, now and into the, into the future. So we, we have a, a space here that's a flexible space. It is a training space. Can be used during the day for drivers to, you know, gather. And then also if we need a staff meeting, we have, Mr. Kurtz is here. He can quote the numbers, I'm sure. We have a number of drivers, our White Knoll area that would, would fit in this space for a staff meeting. Our Lexington lot would fit in here for a staff meeting. Our River Bluff folks would fit in here for a staff meeting. We're not going to bring all 300 drivers to this one lot and do a training. It's not practical to build a space for one or two times a year when we already have those types of spaces that they can have access to in our, in our schools across the district. So we've, we've scaled this to, to meet a general need throughout the course of the year. Again, you know, just early, early renderings of what these spaces might look like, conference room space, some general office space there that's flexible. This concept has worked really well at our operations center where we did office spaces around the perimeter of the building and then added some flexible space. And it's shown here as cubicles. We could go in and, and put walls up if we needed confidential space and do, do those to the ceiling. So folks could, you know, have private office spaces. But it's designed to be flexible and, and add that for future growth. The, the original budget, as we've talked about, was $3 million. And the scope there was to build basically a, a small space like we have at our Gilbert and Pelearian facilities. I showed you pictures of those last time. And then a parking lot to handle the buses from the three areas we're trying to consolidate. We presented two options to you last time. You know, the first option was to go ahead and, and build that type of facility, that small facility on the space. And then at some point down the road, come back and, and address the, the ongoing needs and future needs of the, of the district. Option two was to increase the budget to, to build, you know, the, the scope that we're, we're looking at needing in the, in the, in the district this time to meet our needs going forward. We have a couple of different ideas around funding. Dr. Guyton asked last time, I think, use the term waterfall approach to funding and, and ask for some feedback on, on what that might look like. And so what I would tell you is we, we do potentially have an opportunity to sell a portion of that land. We're not bound to do that. We certainly would do, do it at the board's pleasure there. If we, if the board is interested in doing that, that is available. So that would be one way to generate some revenue. Certainly wouldn't be a primary source of revenue. I, I've broken down essentially four different buckets for you to consider should you move forward with the additional budget allocation. The first bucket and really the one that's the most, that I think is the best fit for this application is using the bond premium that we have achieved through our bond sales and our outstanding credit rating. That bond premium allow, is, is restricted to the bond program and the projects in the bond program. Okay? So you can use it to address additional budget needs throughout the course of that program. And so there, you know, over $20 million in that fund. We approved a motion last meeting for a $5 million allocation at Lakeside Middle School. We would, would use a portion of the bond premium for that. And so, you know, there's some $15 million plus dollars left in that, in that fund that would be available. A second bucket that you could consider using would be 8% money. And the 8%, this fall, we do an annual bond sale in the fall. And a portion of that bond sale makes our required installment purchase revenue bond payment. It's basically like making a house payment. We, we make that payment each fall. And there's a gap of, of funds that, that we get as part of a function of our growth each year that's generated. We anticipate that dollar figure being about $6.5 million in this upcoming bond sale. And so typically each year, we, we use those funds to target projects that are ongoing maintenance projects, HVAC needs, roofing needs and so forth that the district has that are outside of the 2018 bond referendum. We're currently working on a, a budget to present to you for roughly that figure in anticipation of that amount of money. And, and so, and depending on which, you know, what you pick, where you go, you can, we would develop a budget based on whatever volume is left in that. But we have ongoing HVAC needs. We have ongoing roofing needs and so forth. And so this source of money is flexible and it's not tied to the specific criteria that are in the bond program. So the bond premium, if you think about that is, is restrictive in that it, it has to go to those bond projects. This, this 8% allocation would, the restrictions would be set up at the time of the bond sale, so it's more flexible. An additional bucket that you might consider would be, I mentioned earlier in our budget presentation, we anticipate approximately $7 to $9 million in budget surplus this year. And, you know, I, I often enjoy the idea that in a 300 and, you know, $4 million budget with literally thousands of accounts, the idea that everything's going to be spent out to the penny and/or revenue is going to come into the penny is just not a concept that anybody understands. I mean, that's not practical. And so you're going to have surpluses, you hope. You're in trouble if you have deficits. And this district has not had a deficit. And that's why we have the credit rating we have. That's why we have the recognitions that we have going forward. So that surplus would be available as an option. Again, that is a portion of fund balance. And so, you know, it, it is less restrictive. It's really, you know, you can use that for any capital purchases that you would want to make. So that would be an option to use, you know, some or all of that, you know, as a, as a targeted source. I, I mentioned earlier, if we, I'm just going to use a number, $8.5 million. If we ended up there as a surplus, our fund balance would grow to approximately 74.5 million. Of that, there, there are about $9 million worth of committed costs because we, our budget, you know, just had about $7.5 million in use of fund balance and 1.5 million of prepaid expenditures. I guess you're down about 65.5 million of fund balance. And that's about 22.3% of our operating budget. And so it would, there would be an opportunity to use some of that fund balance for, for this purpose. The last bucket that I would mention to you that, that would be available is simply our other capital funds. There's, it's our, our fund balance in our capital account. There have been years in the past where the district had a surplus and the board elected to, to transfer some or all of that surplus into the capital fund to, to help meet the needs of the district. That has not happened in the past few years. But that money sits there available for, for your use as well. You know, I, I do caution that we have $5.5 million worth of, excuse me, $5.5 million square feet worth of physical plant in our district. That's a significant volume of buildings. And we, I would tell you that we have more building capacity than anybody in Lexington County. And so with that comes responsibility to maintain those facilities, to deal with, you know, unknown disasters, et cetera, that might come up. So, you know, the, the 7.6 million of other capital funds, in my personal opinion, as your finance officer, would be the, probably the last place I would look to, to, to use. I think you, you need those funds sitting there to, to protect you in the, in the, in the district in the event of some, some issue that might come up. So, you know, my recommendation would be if you, if you want to move forward with your, with your motion, as you stated, you know, you look to the bond premium first. And then, you know, you could, you could look at these other sources of funding as well if you, if you wanted to do that. And we can, we can handle that however, however you would like. So with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you have regarding the facility.
So I'm understanding that earlier this month, we had a drawing that had four maintenance bays and four wash bays. And we were told it's going to cost 9.5 million. But now we have two wash bays and two maintenance bays. And it's still going to cost 9.5 million?
What, what we showed you is a drawing of what the initial requests were. Okay? And that's what we felt like important to get out on the table is this is what the initial scope looked like. And what I'm going to tell you is that when we go to actually did this work, you know, where we have value engineered us to this point. Okay? And that was before we started this conversation a month ago. Well, in the last month, steel has gone up significantly more. And lumber in the last few days has actually trended down, which is helpful. So I'm telling you that, that at this time, that's what we're going for. But, you know, I will come back to you and let you know what we're going to end up with before we move forward. But I don't know what that's going to look like yet. That is our target at this point.
So is there something in writing that says this drawing we have right here, right now, today, costs 9.5 million?
No.
So where did that number come from?
That number came from conversations with our architect and our construction management company, putting estimates, cost estimates on what these things will look like.
So they, they, they do have it in writing. They gave you an estimate?
They, they gave us a verbal estimate. This is what we see at how, how, that's how it works. And then once we say, okay, we're good with the budget, we're in the budget, then we develop a GMP amendment, which shows a detailed cost breakdown of everything that we review and look at before we sign any kind of amendment or contract commitment to the, to the vendor.
Okay. Cause that's what I'm interested in seeing. What are some of our options on the site? So we originally had four of each bay. Now we have two. I know there are other things that we could look at. I know you said we're flexing that classroom space. But let's see here. The diesel pump, I'd like to see the cost of...
We have an allowance in the, in the contract or in the estimate for about $250,000 for the diesel fueling station and for the propane fueling station. Those are allowance items. So what that means is if the, the cost actually to implement that comes in less than the $250,000, we get that full amount of money back.
Okay. So these are things that I think the board needs to be asking for before we actually vote on a number. Because what can happen here is if we approve this $6.5 million increase and we don't have any details other than verbal, I feel like this is what got us here in the first place, where MB Con quoted $3 million. We had nothing in writing. And I remember asking for that back in 2018, before the bond referendum passed. So now we have $6.5 million. We have nothing in writing. So what's to say that in a year, the district doesn't come back and say, okay, there were some changes. Now it's going to be $2 million more? Or, I mean, we don't have anything to refute that because we, the board, never had anything in writing to begin with. The district does, but we don't have anything. So we can't...
We, Ms. Garrus, we've had construction meetings and conversations with the CM at Risk contractor and reviewed estimates with them, much like we're doing in this room right here. I don't have anything in, in writing to give you that says that. So I'll say that again.
Okay.
We've had, we've had direct meetings with them, working on this project.
Okay, just like...
And came up with these numbers.
The $250,000, this is a new figure that was just given us tonight as far as an allowance item. And here's another problem. And I've emailed this to the board continuously, that on the ballot, it says when there are remaining funds, those are going to be board approved. But we have projects that are complete. And then the district takes that money and does...
We haven't used any funds from any project except at that school. The funds still sit in those accounts. And you get a budget, the actual report each month that shows that those funds are still sitting in those accounts. We haven't moved any money from any project.
Correct. And I'm not saying that you have.
I think you just did.
No, I'm saying, when you have additional...
I just wanted to clarify. So what you're asking, we're being asked to do is to approve an amended budget for this project. We're not approving these specs.
That is correct.
These are, this is just a, a rendering of your conversations with the contractor. And we know based on that, that the estimate we have for this project needs to be increased. And we need to approve a new budget for this project, not the building.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Correct. Because at the end of the day, the building could be anything. That's the whole problem. We don't know what the building is. We just know that they want $6.5 million. And as far as...
But Ms. Garrus, that's the same thing with our school projects. We didn't approve the design of Pelearian Middle School before it was constructed. We didn't approve...
So you knew how much it would cost?
Yes, but the, but the cost varied for, I mean, we, we built the same school three times. And the cost varied depending on the construction cost and the site. And, you know, they moved walls and they changed the location. And so those, those buildings varied. But we didn't approve that actual building plan. That was left, they, they, we gave them a budget within which to do that. But the actual specifics of the building, that's, that's not what we're tasked with, with approving.
Right. And that's the problem. Not that you're not tasked with approving that, but that there's a set budget that they're given. And they know that at the end of this project, there's going to be so much left over. Now, when there is money left over, they spend it how they see fit. And I'm not saying that you're spending it in different areas. Like I said last month, or earlier this month at our first meeting, at Lexington High School, there were leftover funds. Those funds were, went to the breezeway from...
But I believe that the, the breezeway canopy was in the, that plan. Isn't that right, Mr. Salters? Wasn't that part of the...
Last month it wasn't. And when I've asked in the past, it wasn't in that plan. It wasn't listed.
But it is on the list of, of items that were part of the bond package for Lexington High School was improvements to the breezeway. Those were on that list. And so those funds from one part of the project at Lexington High School were then shifted to cover one of the other projects that was listed as part of the Lexington High School bond package. So they're not, they're not moving things as they see fit. Because as Mr. Salters has stipulated, the, the bond funds can only be used for projects approved by the voters in the bond package. And, and that's what, that's what they're doing.
Actually, they can't. They can be used for other projects outside of the bond referendum package.
Mr. Salters, did you not just say that they are only used within the bond?
We are only using the, the proceeds from the bonds for the projects listed in the bond program. If there's any excess left, they are still sitting at that school.
At the end of the day, can you use bond referendum funds for other projects in this district?
You can only use bond referendum funds for projects and/or schools that are named in the referendum.
So you're, you're telling me that if we have, I don't know, at the end of the 2000, whenever, when this is finished, a couple of years, and we have $10 million left over in bond referendum funds, that we cannot go do in addition on another school?
Not unless it was listed in the referendum.
So all the money that's left over then, that has to go back to where? Because...
It can be used for projects listed in the referendum and/or school, it, schools in the referen-, so for, let me give you an example. In the referendum, there's, there are technology purchases. Okay? There's an allocation for technology. There's an allocation for furniture. Though, you could go back and buy furniture. You could go back and do technology refresh if you wanted to. Those are, those are options that you could look at. But, but the projects have to be named in some way in the referendum. And, and in some cases, and, and, you know, we've had this discussion before when we've done a bond sale, that is why our financial advisors recommend creating descriptions that are flexible. Because you don't know what your needs are. You don't know what things are going to look like five years from now. Right? We didn't know we were going to have a pandemic and we were going to be talking about, you know, ionization of, of particles in our classrooms. Right? We didn't have a clue about that. But we are now. Okay? And so if you, if you put in your referendum specifically, we are only going to do, you know, UV improvements in our, in our classrooms to, to address, you know, bacterial issues, you're not going to do bi- ionization, bipolar ionization. That's not an option for you. But if you say we're going to improve air quality in our schools, well, that gives you some flexibility. And, and that's what the recommendation of our financial advisors is, so that you have that flex, flexibility. That's like when we do the $6.5 million sale each, each year. I'm, I'm saying 6.5 each year. It's not. It varies. But when we do that sale in the fall, that's why the flexibility is there, so that you can use that money for different purposes that you see fit as, as the needs arise.
And we have that flexibility. There is an item on the ballot that says renovations, additions, or something like that. I think it's item number nine on the ballot. So clearly we can use that money for whatever...
For any school that's named on that ballot.
Not according to the ballot. Because if you look at item number nine, and I have that...
I'm not going to debate that with you.
Okay. Okay. You don't have to. But I'm just telling y'all that they can use the money anywhere they want when it's left over, according to the ballot.
They is us. This is, we're talking about us.
Okay. You've delegated the authority to spend the money to district administration. So we can give them $6.5 million. But if it only cost four, they're going to do what they've done at other projects throughout this. And they're going to take the leftover funds. And they may have spent them on that additional things at that school, but it wasn't things that was outlined on that ballot in that bond referendum.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions for Mr. Salters?
Mr. Salters, what percent completion are we at with the bond referendum projects? Roughly? I mean, you know, are we 30%? 60%?
I'll have to get you a number, but I would venture to say we're probably 60%.
60% done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so at 60% done, our projects indicate that to date, we would have about 11.5 million overage. Now, again, I understand DOT, we're subject to DOT, we're subject to scope changes. We're, we're subject to all these things. But we're at 11.5 million now. The bond premium was again, how much?
Interest and premium, 22 million or so.
22 million. Okay. I guess you probably see where I'm going with this. As we complete the remaining, remainder 40% of the projects listed on the bond referendum, are there projects on there that would concern us for another 10.5 million in variance potentially?
I, I would venture to say that the River Bluff Area Elementary School, which is a, a project that was originally scoped and slated for early in the referendum, is, and was not programmed with cost of living increases associated with the budget, is going to be one where you're going to have some, probably some budget issues. And, and the reason I say that is, I mean, obviously, we haven't found property for that, that facility yet. And so the, you know, the construction cost of Centerville Elementary School, which was in budget, but had the same budget as this River Bluff Area School. And I'm telling you, the cost, I mean, we're watching the bid market right now. It is, it is vastly different than it was two years ago. So that's one. The Bluefield Area Elementary School, which, you know, is, is, I say Bluefield Area, we have property on Bluefield Road. That school is coming up. We're actually, you know, starting the conversations about it now. It, it potentially could have some overrun, but it did have inflation factors built into it because it was originally slated for later in the referendum. So it has a bigger budget than the other elementary schools that we built. Those are the two biggest projects we have left. We've, we've committed the costs for the major projects, the, the three middle schools, the additions, the major additions at White Knoll High School, the major additions at Pelearian and at Gilbert. All those costs have been committed at this point. So those are the two biggest things we have left.
But probably not inflation, the, the inflation factor was probably not what we're seeing today, I would imagine.
Oh, no, sir.
I think the latest I saw today was like 4.2% on the CPI. So obviously inflation's going to be about that. But...
Right. Right.
Okay.
And, and again, I, you know, our, our buildings, I, I, you know, I mentioned lumber as a relative point, data point. But our buildings are built with block and steel. So steel, the steel... So steel, the steel number-
Sure.
Really drives a lot of what, what we do.
Got you. Okay, and, you know, a- as you present the, the buckets to us, the bond premium, the 8%, the budget surplus, and the capital funds, I think it's important for us to, to kind of focus on the big picture here. And the big picture being that three of these options do not include debt. And so, you know, regardless of our, our feelings about this, at the end of the day, we are making decisions in a, from a standpoint of excess. And so the excess comes because of the reputation of Lexington School District One, period. You know, and, and the hard work that's been, been put in. And so, you know, we're in a great place to be making this decision. It's terrible that we have to make this decision, you know? That's not the first time it's been said tonight. But it's, you know, 6.5 million, it obviously stings. Let me ask you this. Go ahead, I'm sorry, you can say something. Because, I mean, I work at the hospital, and we have a variety of construction projects. Anyone who is building anything now is going through the same struggle. So again, for us to sit here and say, "Oh, my God, the budget's changed, the amount of dollars changed," that's what anyone who is in an expansion mode is seeing right now, who had to budget and commit funds years ago, or, you know, not today. So I guess what I'd say is we are in an expansionary element of our economy, and all the building projects are above what was projected even six months ago.
Right, yeah, I mean, you know, we went to buy air conditioner for one of our buildings, and we got guaranteed price for eight hours. And that's not a joke. I mean, that's, that's legit. It was eight hours. That this price is good for the next eight hours. After that, there's no guarantee. And so this is just the world we live in right now. Now, I saw the same thing you saw. Lumber futures came down about a week and a half ago, and have started to drift down. So that's obviously going to help us.
If we were to table this for four weeks, what does that do to our timeframes for anything?
It obviously would delay construction and completion. We, one of the dependencies of this project is that the Whitenall buses that sit at Whitenall High School are located in the future stacking loop that we've worked with SC DOT, Office of School Facilities, the State Department of Education, to create as part of the renovations at Whitenall High School. We're sitting here today. You'll see pictures here in a little while. The classroom wing at Whitenall High School will be finished this summer. Their 32 classroom addition. The Performing Arts Center will be finished later on this fall, and, and probably into the winter. And so that's a piece that needs to happen. Those buses need to be off of that lot, so we can finish that stacking, so that we can complete that project. If, if we delay that effort, you know, that has impacts on the Whitenall project, because you're delaying that contractor from completing their work, which impacts the general conditions and so forth, that you pay that contractor for sitting there on that site, not being able to complete their work.
So does that, the, the, the bus issue, is that related to the building itself? Or is, would we be able to do the, the surface work and utilize the space ahead of the building completion? Because obviously, the building's not going to be completed in six weeks, or eight weeks, or 10 weeks.
No, sir, and, and, and the issue, you know, the surface work could be done this summer, but, but the issue is that those buses are parked there for the Whitenall. I mean, the Whitenall lot operates out of Whitenall High School, and they use the area that we need to, to do that work. So we don't anticipate that work being done, you know, this fall. But the further we push this back-
True.
The further back it, that gets pushed. And, and that's a, that's a dependency that really, I mean, Whitenall High School needs that space. Their, their drop-off and pickup was designed in 2000, well, it was designed in 1998, before the OSF specifications required, you know, all the linear feet of stacking that we have now and so forth. And so they really struggle at drop-off and pickup time.
Got you, got you. Yeah, I guess from my seat, my perspective, you know, when I hear the term verbal estimate, it, it does make me nervous, okay? Because if I'm a construction guy, and I've just got 6.5 million, amazingly enough, that building's going to come in at 9.5 million. I can promise you. I mean, there, there's going to be some numbers moved around. There's going to be, it's going to come in at 9.5. And so I, I guess I would, I would feel more comfortable if, if I saw a breakdown of a budget to accompany the request that comes with this. In addition to that, I would love to see a firm plan regarding where the excess funds would come from. And I believe in three or four weeks, we'll have more clarity on that as we begin to close out the books for this year, and we start to get an idea of, of excess. I don't like the idea of using 8% money, because I think the Beachwoods Middle School was a fantastic reason why we can use 8% money to build a school and have it paid for in a very quick amount of time. And also the fact of, there's just more people coming to Lexington. And so the bond referendum is going to cover us until what day?
It's a five-year plan.
Five-year plan, so 2023. Come 2024, we're probably going to need another school, you know? Just based off the, the growth that we're seeing in the area. And it would be lovely to have 8% money to be able to do that. And, and especially from the fact that we have excess buckets that we can pull from. But it would be nice to see a plan, because I don't want to see a, a future board set up for failure. If we can go ahead and plan for that now, and if that means we have to delay it for four weeks, I think there's value in that.
And I would tell you, Dr. Guyton, if you're asking your CFO for a plan to fund this, if, if you want to move forward with this recommendation, it's, to me, a no-brainer that you take it out of the bond premium. That's specifically what it's designed for, and it has, it is the most restrictive source of funding that you have. If you go to fund balance, if you go to 8%, you know, you go to capital funds, for all the reasons you've just talked about, the, you, you don't go to those things. You go to the bond premium, and that's where you use the money from. So, I mean, if you're asking for a, a funding plan, that's, that's my recommendation to you.
And I would absolutely agree. I think you use up the most restrictive funds first, and then if you have to go to a secondary or tertiary bucket, then you do it at that point. What's the likelihood of, of a, the construction company giving us a, a firm budget on this?
What's going to happen is, once we settle on a budget, we will go to market with, with, you know, what we think that the final scope would be, which is basically what we're showing you here, and see what the market bears. The, the market may bear, you know, way more than we can afford. And if that's the case, then we obviously have to go back to the drawing table. I mean, I can, you know, we can, we can't do that in, in a month. But, you know, before we sign a GMP, I can certainly bring it back to you and, you know, have that conversation.
Got you, okay, thank you.
But I, I guess our point of bringing this to you is, I need to know whether I need to go to the contractor and say, "Hey, I've got a, a $3 million budget to work with," or "I have a $9.5 million budget to work with." It gives me a point of reference to be able to, to try to value engineer to and work towards. Because right now, I, I don't know, I can just throw a number out there, and it doesn't help me at all. Having a budget that's more realistic for what the scope is that we need gives us something to work towards, and gives us something to value engineer to, you know, and, and, and work with, with the contractor. We, just having, you know, if you, if you go with option one, and it's $3 million, okay? Well, that's what we'll go work towards. If it's, if it's option two, or, you know, if you wanted to land somewhere in between, we'll go work towards that. And, and we can bring you back information that shows, hey, this is what we're going to buy for, you know, this amount of money. But, but just telling me to go get a number, I, I need, I need some direction. That's what I'm asking you for.
So, Mr. Salters, if we piecemeal this out, and do some now, do some three years, five years, seven years down the road, we're really not guaranteed a funding source that wouldn't go back to the taxpayers. So right now, we're, we're looking at excess. But if, if we piecemeal this out, we, we may not have those excess-
Yeah, Ms. Roswell, you're exactly right.
Okay.
Correct, I, I don't think that's ever been the issue. We know that the small facilities, such as what Gilbert and Pillion have, are not an option when you combine two very large transportation offices together. The problem here is that we had a budget for $3 million. That I still, even after asking, haven't been told what the $3 million would cover to begin with, other than something like Gilbert and Pillion. But yet, I know that those offices didn't cost $3 million. So I'm not even sure where the $3 million came from. And on another note, while we were sitting here-
Those offices didn't park 200 buses.
Right, correct. So that's what I'm wondering, is of that $3 million, what part of that was for parking?
The bulk of that money would be in asphalt. Because you have to do heavy-duty asphalt for, for the buses, and that is a significant amount of space that we have to pave for 200 buses, and the bulk of that money would be in asphalt.
So does Gilbert have heavy-duty asphalt?
In that area, they do.
Where the buses park, they have what?
If you recall at Gilbert, what we did when we built the stadium back in whatever, 2005, '06, or '07, I don't remember exactly when that was, there was a gra- I mean, a gravel parking lot. And so we did a multi-use area by parking the buses in that area. The stadium parking area got paved, and the building got built. And so that area is, is heavy-duty asphalt. That's why it hasn't torn up.
I mean, I just know it wasn't approved by the Office of School Facilities as a transportation parking lot, because they were never told that the buses were going to be parked there. The architect just marked "N.A." beside that little box when it came to that. But I also looked up while I was sitting here, both the Technology Center and Lexington High School in the bond referendum facilities plan, and there's nothing about a breezeway there. So that was not included in that. And as far as what Mr. Guyton said about, once this is over, we're going to need more schools. Well, yes, because that was one of my main concerns going into this referendum was, the schools we were building were not going to be big enough. And on the district's website-
Point of order, I think we're going to go back to the topic that we're talking about here. So does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Salters?
I just, from an operation perspective, Mr. Kurtz, Mr. Caldwell, what do we need for our bus drivers? Because again, I want to be, as a board member, supportive of bus driver, driver needs. So what would y'all's recommendation be with this facility decision, to move forward tonight with approval?
Well, certainly, if you're asking me, I would say that, yes, sir. I mean, the, the facilities, you've seen the pictures, and I would encourage you to see it firsthand. It is just absolutely unacceptable. So if, if, you know, the choice were mine, obviously, I would want to move forward as quickly as possible to, to get them a, a, a productive and nice environment to work in every day.
So for Mr. Kurtz, I know you're, how many bus drivers had input into this plan? Have they seen this plan? Have you shown it to them and said, "What do y'all think about this?" Okay. You did what, I'm sorry, what was that? Okay, I know, I've emailed to the board as well, that I do think bus drivers need to be involved in this, in the planning of this facility. And I think they would have some, some good input. And so it might have, that might affect the budget as well.
Ms. Simpson, did you have a question for Mr. Salters?
This may sound very elementary, but I just really want to make sure I'm understanding this. So I'm going to do like a very brief recap. So 2018, $3 million was kind of what was estimated for a facility, but the scope wasn't really what we need. And so now, based off of what we do need, it's estimated, after you're talking with people, that it'll be about $9.5 million, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so with that new building, if tonight we vote on the $9.5 million, is that, is a good analogy, kind of like with a mediation? Like when we tell the lawyer, "We'll go to a certain dollar amount," that you go and you talk to the people and say, "Here's what I can spend. Can I get what I need?" I, I just, I'm trying to decide, I'm trying to figure out, like, if I'm building a house, do I go and say, "I want a four-bedroom house with this, how much is it going to cost?" Or do I say, "I've got $300,000 to spend, what can I get?"
So let me, let me, I appreciate your question. I absolutely do. And, and so we have a budget of $9.5 million, assuming that, you know, you guys would tell us to move forward.
That you're recommending to come from-
Whatever the number, let's just say $3 million. We have a budget of $3 million.
Okay, okay.
So I, I, I will go to the contractor and the architect, and then we will have design meetings around that budget. Now, what may be missing in all of this is that we have been building in this district. Literally, myself personally have been involved in over a billion dollars worth of construction in Lexington One. That's with a "B." So it's, this is not my first project. This is not the first project that our, our staff has worked on. We, we do this every day. And so, and maybe I didn't mention this, but we also pay taxes in this district. We sit out here, we are citizens of this district. I don't want to pay any more for anything in this district than you do, or you do, or anybody sitting in this room, or on TV. We care about what it costs. And so we go into these design meetings and expect these folks to bring back realistic costs. And by the way, we're building a lot of stuff right now. So the reason we know all about the market is because we're building. So I know what it costs to, to install HVAC per square foot, what it costs to, to roof a building per square foot, what it costs to put in fire alarm per square foot. So when a contractor comes back to me and, and says, you know, a ridiculous number, I'm saying, "No, that's not happening. We're not doing that." And then what happens is, we make a design, then they go to market for the subcontract work. So, you know, HVAC, mechan- that's mechanical, your electrical sub, your plumbing sub, you know, any, the fire alarm, you know, fire sprinkler, all that stuff. They go to market and, and bid, take bids on all of that stuff. And then we review all of those bids, and, and come back together and say, "Okay, that's within budget," or "It's not within budget." And if it's not within budget, we will make decisions about, you know, how do we value engineer and, and, and get it within budget? Or if it is within budget, you know, we move forward with the project. But at every turn of the project, we have weekly construction meetings. And I sit in a lot of those meetings. Our Director of Operations sits in those meetings. We have two construction, folks who, who have built buildings all their lives sit in those meetings. And we're constantly watching the contractors to make sure that anything that goes on is what we, the client, and, and we, the taxpayer, want, and, and to save money. So that, that process will occur as we go forward. Once we settle on a GMP, that's where we get all the costs and all the prices broken out. Now, what is also, I think, missing in the conversation is, that GMP is a competitive number, okay? It has competitive information for that particular construction company. It has their labor rates, it has what they pay their subs, it has, you know, contract, you know, negotiation stuff between them and their sub. So, you know, you throw that information out around in the public, and those contractors start to get really nervous about, "Well, wait a minute. Now, you know, Ms. Garris knows what I'm paying Dr. Guyton." And so Ms. Garris is, is not going to work for me anymore, because I've been paying her, you know, or Dr. Guyton's not going to work for me anymore, because I've been paying him less than, than Ms. Garris. So there's all kind of competitive information that, that, you know, goes through that. That's why i- i- it's, it's just not as simple a process as everybody wants to make it look, look like. And that's why you have people in place that do it every day and have done it for a long time, that can work through it and get you a number that meets the needs. If, if it works out, and if it doesn't work out, and we have to exceed the budget, that's why we're sitting here having this conversation. I'm telling you right now, for what we need in this district, I can't build it for $3 million. It's not going to happen. And so I'm giving you a choice. Let's either set another realistic target, which means that we're hoping to save money. We're not going to spend, hopefully, $9.5 million. Because in Lexington School District One, all of our CM@Risk contracts are written so that we get all the money back. We're one of the very few districts in the state that does that. A lot of districts, and all these contractors we work with, they come in and make these presentations. They want to share, split the savings, they want to take all of the savings. You know, if, if you want to work in Lexington One, we're keeping the savings. It's, it's our money, to Dr. Powers' point. Our money, meaning the citizens of Lexington One, it's our money. And so that's how our contracts are written. We go through that whole process. That's a big answer to what you're saying, and it, I touched on a lot of different stuff. But, but what you need to understand is, if you give us a budget, whatever that budget is, 3 million, 6.5 million, 9 million, 9.5 million, whatever, we're going to work towards that number and come up with the best we can get for that number, given the current market. current market conditions. And it's going to be competitively bid by that CM@RIS contractor. That's what they do. And we will bring information back to you. If that's what you guys want to see before we sign a GMP and move forward, we're happy to do that. And we can talk through exactly what the plans look like and, and where we go.
I know it's late. I do have another, one more.
Absolutely.
Just, so I know we can't control, like, construction costs and stuff like that right now. But looking to the future, is there any other projects that you know of that might be off scope? Like, not price, because it's more expensive to build right now. I understand that.
Sure.
But like, what we had planned for this facility, we need something bigger. Obviously, we all agree on that, we need something bigger. But are there any other things out there that we just might need to stick in the back of our brain going forward?
Well, I think that's a really great question, and I appreciate you asking that. As we look at what projects are left in the referendum, I, I don't see any other projects at this point that, that are off scope.
Off the scope, okay.
And we have a couple of classroom additions that we're doing. You know, Carolina Springs Middle, Gilbert Middle School. And, and depending on what growth happens in, you know, those areas, you know, right now, we have a certain number of classrooms programmed for those additions. It's possible that, that, you know, we may see a spike in enrollment in a certain area, and we may need to look at, oh, we may need to add a classroom or two, right, to, to those, to those projects. But I don't see anything, any big red flags at this point. You're welcome.
And so Kathy, I have those documents with the GMP that he's talking about. I'll be glad to share those with you. They're like a bunch of work. But it's very enlightening. I've learned a lot since talking with him over the last few weeks.
All right. Ward, we do have a motion on the table. Dr. Powers, would you repeat the motion for us, please?
I'd love to. Madam Chair, I move that the board increase the budget for the new transportation facility by 6.5 million, from 3 million to 9.5 million for construction of the new facility.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. And I'm going to now call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the motion carries.